A quorum being present, the special town meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been properly posted as required by the general laws of the town of Granby?
Yes, it has.
Please rise as Select Board Chair Ms. Dufresne leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sitting tonight onstage to my left is the Finance Board, behind me is the Town Clerk, the Town Attorney, the interim Town Administrator, and the Select Board. On the floor, you have your West Street Building Committee. As usual, I will go through some procedures for tonight. If you'd like to comment or discuss one of the articles, please raise your hand so that I may recognize you. A mic runner will come to you, and you must state your name and address. You're allowed to ask one question at a time with the mic, so after your question, please hand the mic back over to the mic runner. All discussion or questions must be directed towards me, and I will direct your question to the appropriate party. Please do not direct a comment or a question to a particular member at town meeting. All questions tonight and comments must pertain to the two articles on the warrant. We limit the discussions and the questions that you can ask because the warrant is what warns the public of the content of tonight's meeting. If you ask a question or make a comment that is outside the scope of the warrant, I will declare it out of order, and it will not be answered in this forum. In your handouts that you were giving tonight, you have the articles and the motions, a Granby Town Meeting brochure, which explains to you the parliamentary procedure and tells you things like how to make an amendment, how to ask for moving the question, what that means, if you want a secret ballot or a recount. It's all in the colored brochure. Also, you have an amendment worksheet. That worksheet will give you a spot to write your amendment if you want to amend one of the motions. It has to be in writing, and the instructions are on that sheet. If you are a non-voter or a non-resident, please sit to my right in the back of the gym. That's where the non-voters have to sit unless you've been given permission by me to sit somewhere else. Lastly, in the interest of transparency, I would like town meeting to know that I am the chairperson of the West Street Building Committee. I have checked with town council, and there are no conflicts for me to be moderating this meeting tonight. I am confident in my abilities that I will be able to moderate in a fair and impartial fashion regardless of my membership on the committee. Thank you. The moderator will now call on Town Clerk Kathy Kelly Reagan for an announcement.
What a crowd. It's great that everybody came out. I just want to remind, you might have seen this in some of the flyers you just got. It's a mail-in application. So unlike the state and federal elections where everybody gets a little postcard if you want to vote by mail, it is actually the responsibility of the voter for local elections to request a mail-in ballot. If you wish to have a mail-in ballot, then I need to have something in writing. So this can be, make copies of if you want. It's also on our website. You can stop by my office, fill one out, but it will let me, enable me to mail you a ballot for the May 19 election. There is a deadline. The last day to apply for a mail-in ballot is May 12. So if you indeed think you might be away and you want to vote in the election, or you just want to vote by mail, please make sure you get this application over to me so we can get those ballots mailed out to you. Pretty much, voting's still going to be at the high school. Do not know the polling hours yet, and just look on my website. Once we figure out with the warrant what the hours are going to be, then we will let everybody know that. So I think that's it, and thank you very much.
The moderator will now call on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article 1.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer $1,100,000 for the municipal building stabilization fund, transfer $900,000 from the capital needs stabilization fund, and borrow or bond $7,989,361 for a total of $9,989,361 for the purpose of funding the renovation of the West Street Building into municipal offices. This borrowing authorization shall be contingent upon the successful passage of Proposition 2 and 1/2 debt exclusion vote to be held on May 19, 2025.
Second, discussion. So we will have Crystal from the Select Board speak first.
Good, excuse me, good evening. I wanted to explain and discuss why we are here tonight. On December 11, 2023, we had a special town meeting, and the town approved for a total of $7,710,693, $39, sorry, and $0.32 to be allocated for the proposal of funding the renovation of the West Street Building, formerly the West Street Elementary School, for municipal offices, senior center, and additional future programs at the site. Prior to this special town meeting, a West Street Building Committee went to the Select Board in 2018 with the recommendation for the town to take down the original building and then rebuild two new buildings in phases. Phase 1 was to be the municipal offices, and Phase 2, the COA. The Select Board at that time, in 2018, unanimously voted in favor of this recommendation by the town, but the town never acted on it. The current West Street Building Committee was formed by a group of concerned citizens in August of 2022. They went in front of the Select Board and asked the Board to revisit and move forward with the potential use of the West Street Building. The committee suggested the Board fulfill the recommendations of the 2018 committee, or would they consider renovating the West Street School for town offices and a council on aging, or of aging. Due to their concern and the cost of the building not being used, the Select Board asked the committee to develop options for the building and to provide the cost estimates for each option. To be clear, at that point, we were at 2022, and the first one was already three years old, so the pricing was out of date. After going through the options, the committee felt that the West Street Building had a lot of potential, and many contractors that had visited the site believed renovation was the best option and the most feasible option. Given that information, the Select Board tasked the committee with determining the size footage needed for town space and record storage, the review of the 2018 committee report and reuse of it, the review of the original building blueprint, and to tour the building for current conditions. At that time, no appropriations were given in order for the current committee to have a study done. The committee spent their own time collecting all the information, meeting with clients and vendors, and coming up with a plan for the building. That led us to the special town meeting on December 11, 2023. Since this special town meeting, the committee has been working with an owner's project manager and an architect to develop a cohesive plan that outlines the best steps to be taken to renovate the West Street Building. As we know, every year, costs go up, and due to the lack of any appropriations for the committee to conduct a study prior to this December special town meeting, the committee did not have definitive numbers but only had estimates when they came in front of us. The committee came to the Select Board on February 24 of 2025 and outlined the options and the updated cost for the West Street Building renovations. The Select Board agreed that the, excuse me, sorry, the decision, my God, I can't even speak, the decision should not rest solely on the Select Boards, but instead, the townspeople should decide. Tonight, at this special town meeting, we, the people, need to decide what is to become of the West Street Building. The West Street Building Committee Chair, the interim Town Administrator, and the Town Council have drafted this warrant that is presented to you today. Tonight, we need to decide, will we appropriate these funds for this project? Remember, we don't have to agree on everything, but we do need to be respectful to one another. Everyone is entitled to their opinion, and thank you very much for coming out tonight.
She's coming.
The West Street School, excuse me, the West Street Committee is here to help explain the process of the renovation of West Street Building. We are created by the Select Board, and we were tasked to investigate the potential use of West Street Building for town offices and council of aging, COA. As stated previously, we presented the Board three renovation possibilities with costs in late February. The Select Board chose this option. We were told to move forward with a complete renovation of 22,000 square feet and abate the 44,000 square feet. Tonight, our goal is to give you as much information as we can regarding what has been done with West Street School, excuse me, West Street Building project, and hopefully answer any of your concerns. So the big question, why? Why is there an increase of funds since the special town meeting in December 2023? The bottom line is the price did not triple to get fancy with the building. It tripled due to Energy Regulations ADA. When the committee did its initial research ahead of the special town meeting, we were not granted funding for an in-depth feasible study. So the dollar amount was based on an initial assessment conducted by our committee in partnership with subcontractors, engineering firms, the building inspector, the fire chief, state regulators, and we added a contingency of 20% for unforeseen costs. Without a mandate or money for a feasible study, the committee instead focused on identifying key needs. No mandates by Massachusetts state regulation that determine the level of safety requirements in a municipal building, an abatement and hazardous material removal costs, the installation of fire suppression system, changes to the HVAC system for energy conservation, an installation of replacement of windows and doors. The committee did not anticipate the required alteration that the architect presented. Therefore, although the quotes of the committee obtained in 2023 were accurate, there were unforeseen costs. What has been done to the building since the town took over ownership? This is the one time time was on our side. The benefit to the building since it was unoccupied. General maintenance of the building is kept up, running as efficiently as we can while it remained unoccupied. An air quality study was completed, and there was no issues with the air quality according to Mass DEP. In case people are wondering, it's right here. Removal of shrubbery and cleaning outside has eliminated the dampness and mold problem. Reducing the usage of the septic system has recultivated itself, so it's still useful. The well was tested, and it does not need to be relocated. What work has the committee done since 2023 special town meeting, among other things? We selected an OPM, selected an architect that is required by Massachusetts law due to the scale of the renovation, and following the DEP regulations, the oil tank was removed without any complications. Completed a building condition study, site study, and existing facility assessment. Because of these in-depth studies, that's what really increased the cost of the renovation. Formerly interviewing all municipal department heads and completed a comprehensive needs assessment for each municipal department, evaluated various enhancements of floor plans and design concepts of the building, optimizing space allocation and improving the use of the building's existing area, contacted our Massachusetts regulators to keep them informed regarding the updates to West Street and to ask for any potential funding sources they can identify for us. Filing a statement of interest for the Rural Development Grant from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Economic Development. We worked with Pathfinder Technical High School for assistance for horticulture and landscaping to save funds approximately $135,000. This project is officially already on their 2025 school year schedule. Is there room for growth in the West Street Building? This committee wants to prepare for now, plan for the future, and stop band-aiding everything for a quick fix and kicking the can down the road. How are we prepared for future use? Including the abatement of the unoccupied 22,000 square feet section of the building, this will ensure that the entire building will be abated outfitted with new windows installed throughout. All hazardous materials within the building will be removed. The remaining section will be prepared for future renovation. So this cost, preparing the remaining unoccupied section for future renovation, is also added to the cost. What will go in that part of the building will be decided by the town at future date, but preparing it now is key to allowing future growth. So what else caused the increase? We have put in an enormous amount of efforts to minimize costs, working closely with the architect and the OPM to come up with the most cost-effective plan. There are, they are, excuse me, these are some of the requirements of the renovation that increased the December 23 cost. The square footage of the project increased by 30% from what originally thought. This change of space was due to the series of discussions we had with department heads, compliance with industry standards for department needs, and supporting the design with the building capabilities. The most significant cost increase stems from the Massachusetts requirement meeting current building codes for accessibility and energy efficiency. Since Massachusetts regulations require update to the existing heating and cooling system and ventilation upgrades, it is necessary to upgrade the electrical service to support the new system. Can we stay where we are? We currently spend over $100,000 annually to use two municipal office buildings, which we have outgrown. As for the annex, our lease expires in June 2025. Additionally, the owner has decided not to continue renting and is planning to sell the building. Why not buy the annex? The answer price, excuse me, the asking price for four years ago has likely increased. Four years ago, the town turned the offer down because the building did not meet the needs of our municipal offices and storage. In addition, the building would need to be upgraded to meet current building codes and ADA compliance due to the change of usage. Given these factors, buying the annex is not a practical long-term solution. However, I will let the Board of Selectmen discuss any further plans for the annex if this project is not voted through. What about the OCA, excuse me, what about the COA? What will, excuse me, what will we do with the building if the renovation is approved? The plan is to sell the building and apply the profits to any bond we secure for the West Street Building. So selling the building will provide funds to help pay down the bond, and it will also generate property tax revenue, which will contribute taxable income for the town. Why not build onto the COA Center? There is no land to build onto the COA because it's surrounded by wetlands. Why not build onto the old Carnegie Library? There is not a lot, excuse me, there's not enough land space for expansion or parking. Finally, how would this affect my taxes? In your packet, you should have received this flyer detailing the information we're to be going over. There is a chart in the information booth that you receive. It has outlined worst-case scenario for tax increase. It shows the estimate annual tax increase for several assessed house values in Granby. Again, believe me, this committee put in tremendous effort with the architect and the OPM to reduce costs. We, as the committee, were so heartbroken presented with the cost. After completing the initial assessment, we were confident that we could bring this project to life with the funding received from the special town meeting in 2023. We, as the committee, have thought hard about past failed opportunities, current needs, and thought about our future needs. Every concern or question, thought of, anything read, brought to our attention, we, as the committee, have also thought about and outweighed each opportunity or direction. We hope that you see this renovation as an investment for the future of Granby. Well, before I give the mic back, Madam Moderator, I would like to ask to have a motion to allow the OPM and the architect to be able to speak at tonight's meeting.
Can I have a second to allow the OPM or the architect to be able to speak at tonight's meeting? And I need a majority of town meeting to allow that, so all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Motion passes by a majority. The moderator will now call on Mr. Libero of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Finance Committee, as you know, is asked to comment on every article before the town on, that either requires funding or expenditures or purports to require funding or expenditures, so I'm here to do that.
Can you hear him?
Okay, so just turn on.
It's turned on. They got people, so we hand to the microphone. Or you can hold it. Here comes Kane.
Can you hear me now? Oh, okay, thank you. Well, then, without further ado, I'll just repeat what I said. Finance Committee is charged with the responsibility of making comments to you and making a recommendation to you for any article that either requires funding or purports to require funding, so that's what I'm here to do. Before that, though, on behalf of the Finance Committee at least, I'd like to thank and congratulate the committee that spent all their time and effort on working on this project. You can, you can see from, particularly if you're at the earlier meeting, explanation meeting last week, that they've done a tremendous amount of work. They've run into difficulties that no one expected. The odds were really stacked against them because of the increases in costs that are beyond anybody's control and because the extent of the work that needed to be done, which was not known when an initial estimate was made about what the project would look like. So I want to congratulate them on the work they've done. It's very fine work, and the result that they have looks, looks good. Having said all that, I want to report that the Finance Committee recommends that you vote against this project, and I'll tell you why. The reason basically is that this cost is just too much for what we're getting. It's not going to be worth it. We know, and we in the Finance Committee are very much in tune, or were very much in tune with the idea that it's extremely good for a town to have its central offices together, that the place for people to do business with the town ought to be together, place for people to do business with the town ought to be a nice, comfortable-looking place, a professional-looking place, and we don't really have that right now. We're spread out. We've taken care of a number of things over the years. We built a new public safety complex for the police and fire and ambulance. We built a new library. We built a new school. But when we got out of the town hall, the old town hall, whatever it was, 10, 15 years ago, and we moved into the separate offices, they're just kind of held back, and we're going to take care of them someday. Well, we've been through a number of potential projects to pull the town offices back together again, and none of them have seemed to work out. There was great hope for this, but the cost, the extra money, is just not going to be worth it. And one thing I think that we might have to finally think about is this. The Finance Committee has been saying for a number of years that Granby is a small town that likes to think of doing business like a big town. We like the comforts and the things and the opportunities that a big town has. We like the, we like the way people think about big towns in terms of they can provide, and maybe it's time to stop that thinking. Right now, we have the offices spread out to do business with the town, and as I said, we really like the idea of putting it together, but maybe it's time to stop thinking that way. Maybe we just don't need that. One of the other, for example, reasons why you'd like to have everybody together in a nice, big space like we have now, as Micheline has said, is to allow for growth. Well, I've lived in town, we've lived in town over 40 years. Forty years ago, the population of Granby would be described as about 6,000 people. What's the population of Granby today? It's about 6,000 people. So we've had 40 years and no growth, in the sense of a bigger, bigger town in terms of people. It's simply not there. So maybe we go back and rethink about what's necessary to do business with the town. Maybe it's not necessary that these offices all be together. It was nice to have, but it's not necessary. Is it worth an extra, our figuring is going to cost us $700,000 a year for the next 20 years, and is that worth it to be able to do all your business in one place? We don't think so. So I'm afraid that as good as we think this work has been, and as good as a job as they did with what they had to work with, that we no longer are operating under the same circumstances as we did a few years ago, and so that a question of how do you renovate West Street School so it can provide for the offices of the town is no longer a question which we should even be thinking about. We should be thinking about how do we do business with the town? How should the town offices be located? That's the important thing, but we don't think it's necessarily true that the answer is, oh, let's put them all together. So with that, if you have any questions later on, we'd be happy to answer them, but in a nutshell, that's what our thinking is. Thank you.
So I'll now open it up to the floor for discussion or questions. So on the bleachers, I think it's Anthony, I can't see that far.
Thank you. Anthony Serini, Three Seater Drive. I'd like to know if the project is not approved by the town, how does the demolition and the issues of the bond for the school roof come into play? Do we have to pay that off? And what is the amount for that?
I can answer the first part of that anyway. So the next article that we will discuss if this doesn't pass is the demolition of West Street Building for 2.5 million, and that was an estimate from Associated Building Wreckers. And the second part of that, yes, we have to pay off the bond. We borrowed the money, the roof's on there, we would have to pay off the bond.
Anyone else? On the floor, right here? Who's the, Mr. Peters, right here?
I want to thank the building committee, too. I'm on a project in Holyoke for the Strand Theater, rebuilding the Victory Theater, rather, and our cost went up over the past three years, $25 million. So I sort of get the change in the numbers.
Can we have your name and address, please?
Sorry, Susan Knightley, 32 Ferry Hill Road, obviously Granby. Thank you also, Lynn, for this. This is really great to see at a town meeting, your little sheet, so thank you very much. A couple of things I just want to say, and then I have a quick question. I guess, you know, for me, to have a space where people are together is a wonderful idea. I'm also trying to help the cultural council grow. We have no venues, zero. We don't have a place for meetings, we don't have a place for artists to come. We think it would really help the business community to see that we're doing more. You know, I kind of drive around and look at lots and think, okay, if we build an 8,000, a 2,000-foot, a square foot house there, Granby's taxes would increase. And so today, I sort of did a little drive. And so today, I sort of did a little drive around town and thought, okay, right away, we could use those lots and raise $100,000. But obviously, that's not realistic. And I guess my question is, you know, for me, $50 a month won't be a big deal. For a lot of people in this town, that'll be a very big deal. A lot of us are retired. And I wanted to know, because I hear rumblings about what the school needs, how will that affect? If my taxes go up $600 a year, what else could I anticipate down the road in terms of the school? And is that one of the things that the Finance Committee factored into their sort of no recommendation?
John Libero, speaking for the Finance Committee. We did not formally include the thought of a new school into our deliberations. And it's because in past, we've spent some time talking about a new school, and we've seen some figures. And we're of the opinion that it's going to be very, very difficult for the town to agree to pay for a new school. Renovation is a different question, but new school is probably out of the question. As desirable as it might be, when people look at the cost, they're going to collapse. So it was really an independent, we think of these as two independent projects.
Okay, go ahead, Seamus.
Seamus Connolly, 21 Ferry Hill Road, Granby. I have a question. I have a, well, actually, I have a question and a comment. First, I'm going to do the comment. West Street School brings a lot of nostalgic memories. And I, and I am, and, you know, and this has brought a lot of memories, you know, that have, you know, that have just flashed before me. I, I'm wondering, if this does not pass, would the Granby Select Board be willing to set up a date where Granby West Street alumni and could bring their families, and they could, they could look around the school one last time? Whether this passes or not? If we could just show, hey, this is where my first grade or second or third or fourth, third grade classroom was, you know? Just so we can, you know, just so we can be at peace with this. Another thing I have a question about, could we have the artwork that is within the West Street Cafeteria be brought and donated to the Granby Historical Association?
So Seamus, your questions are kind of outside the scope of this article. We're actually just trying to discuss whether or not the town should appropriate the money for renovating. You're asking questions about what will happen if it's not renovated, or if it is, can things in the building be moved? So that would be for a different forum?
Sorry, did not mean to be out of order on that, but like, how would it affect my taxes? Like, how much money?
So Seamus, it is on the packet. It's actually the third paper. So the first column's going to walk you through if we borrow bond $10 million for 25 years. Well, it says 10 on the sheet, so. Oh, that was from the informational meeting. Thank you. So 8 million for 20 years at 5.5%. And then it walks you through based on what your house would be assessed at. So at the informational meeting, if you were unable to attend, the average household is assessed at $407,000.
Any further questions up here on the floor? The man in the burgundy. She's coming.
Hi, Zander Hough, 151 Taylor Street. I understand that the original project had 20% contingency built in. Obviously, we ended up 300% over, or whatever that number ends up being, three times as much. I appreciate we have numbers now with the understanding that was put together, maybe even as recently as last week. However, within the last week, we now have a significant number of tariffs that have been put into place. Do we have any sense of what additional ballooning cost might be incurred accounting for those tariffs?
So I'll have the architect speak that up.
Tim Woodman from Edm Studio, the architect on the project. So in terms of tariffs, the benefit of where we are with renovation as opposed to doing a new building is it limits a lot of the infrastructure and a lot of the other supplies you need, such as steel, which would be, and it is targeted as one of the major tariffed items. The products that we are using throughout the renovation of West Street are mostly readily available, and I would say the vast majority of them are made in the U.S. or available in the U.S. So we expect that the tariff effect is going to be fairly minimal.
Rich in the back has a question.
Rich Dumiraki, Bachelor Street. I just have a few comments to make. I'm 100% in favor of what the Finance Committee said. I agree with them wholeheartedly. I would like to say, I want to thank everyone on the committee for all the hard work they did. But the comment I would make was that very few people on that committee have a construction background. So I think the Select Board, as a Select Board member who's a contractor, he should be on that committee, along with other local contractors. It would really help, I think. First of all, we were all told originally that our taxes would not go up one penny, that $5 million was totally adequate for this construction project. That turned out not to be true. It went from $5 million to $15 million. Okay, so I think that's way too high. I think the objective of the committee was not accurate. They were just told, what should we do with West Street School? They weren't looking at any other school, any other building in town, whether it could be used for what they were trying to accomplish. I think one comment I had was that I think they should look at the high school. The total student enrollment is going down. There's a lot of space there. There's kitchens, there's for senior center. It could be used, the money that has been appropriated could go to the high school. We accomplished two things at once. We have to look at the problem globally. It's not just, what do we do with West Street School as a separate unit? So I hope everybody votes no on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And right behind him?
Lisa Petralia, 6 Common Street. Thank you all for your hard work. I know that it is disappointing when you don't get close to what you were hoping. On the March 17th Select Board meeting, when they were approving this warrant, there was a discussion about amending any articles for this meeting.
Can you put the mic up?
Yes. So I was wondering, what were the other lower-cost options? Were those, I also know that when, in February, the West Street School Building Committee brought their findings to the Select Board, they were given the guidance to write the article for the full amount. And then if things were to be negotiated lower, then less would be, I guess, bonded or needed from our debt exclusion override. So there were three options I just heard tonight. I guess the most comprehensive was 10 million. I'd love to know, 10 million additional on top of the five. I'd love to know how much cheaper the other two were, and what would you forfeit if you looked at those two other options? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, please. Can someone on the committee answer that?
Tim Woodman again. So essentially, we had proposed three separate options. The one that we have been discussing so far tonight is essentially to do a full renovation of the 22,000 square feet for both the town offices as well as the COA. A fallback option, which would save approximately 2.5 million, bringing the total project cost down to 13.9, would be based on doing and taking a number of value engineering measures, where that would include items such as reduced finishes, reduced windows as opposed to infill in the wall, reduced pavement. Essentially, cutting back and keeping the same program, but cutting back every single bit of quote-unquote "fat" that we could find in the building. It would make it much more of a plain building, get you into the space, but all of the spaces would be there. The second option, which was the more cut back in terms of space and square footage, would include abatement of the cafe as well, cafeteria as well as the gym. However, it would cut the COA from the project, which would drop the overall cost down to 11.8. So a further $2 million from the project.
Any further questions? Oh, sorry. Come on up, Mr. Libero. And I'll give you Mr. Randall.
John Libero, again, speaking for the Finance Committee. My question, Finance Committee, is along the lines of the question that was just asked, but a little more specific. We had heard that a very, very minimalist approach was considered. And the byproduct of the very minimalist approach was that the project could have come in with a very minimalist structure at $10 million total, including the five already appropriated, would require us to raise $3 million from borrowing. And $3 million from borrowing could be paid back through property, through tax increases on the average house of about $75 a year, not a month, a year, about $6 a month. And we were very interested in hearing more, but I don't know what kind of details exist around that project or how far it went with that. But I would ask if we could be told a little bit about what it was and why that wasn't considered as a possibility to bring to the crowd. Thank you.
Can someone from the committee talk about that third option? The most minimal option without the abatement?
So that most minimal version of the project essentially focused on only doing primarily that which was required by code. So that's your energy and your, in order to occupy the space, your abatement of the space. It removed the COA senior center offices. It removed upgrades to the cafeteria in terms of creating additional storage and creating the ability to partition that space, as well as the kitchen that was associated with that space, and focused primarily on only creating town offices. Those town offices were stripped down to only be open office space with partitions only related to meeting rooms and nothing else. So essentially, it would create a bare box space you'd move your furniture in. It would include the necessary items, i.e. fire protection, ventilation, accessibility, upgrades to your bathrooms, as well as just making sure the building is safe for current use, and replace your windows. But did not include all of the asks in terms of the level of privacy and utility that were discussed with each of the department members. The abatement as well, beyond in the 1941 portion of the building, which if you look at the plan within your packet, is the gray portion on the right-hand side of the building, would not be included in that number. So that would not prepare that portion of the building for future use.
When the information came in front of the Select Board, we looked at, basically what the gentleman had just said. We weren't getting anything really that we thought would be able to accomplish what the goal was. So that's when we looked at it, and as he said, that's kind of the bare minimum. And they went back to the other town offices that would be moving in there, and they didn't think it was adequate for what they wanted. And then additionally, if that, we did something like that and decided later on to do the other renovations, it would cost much more money to do that. So looking at it, it seemed like we look at the whole thing now and try to accomplish that now instead of, again, starting off somewhere and then maybe not, trying to finish it down the road and not be able to.
Thank you. Mr. Randall?
Thank you very much, George Randall, 52 Taylor. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but first thing is I want to thank the committee for all their hard work. I know you've spent a lot of hours away from your families in meetings and meetings and meetings. You folks have accomplished a lot, and I have to agree with what Micheline said tonight is that the, and it's been said by the committee twice, that they were planning for our future. That has not been the case in the past. A prime example is our wonderful safety complex that we have. It was built for the problems, and, I'm sorry. Initially, it was scoped to accommodate future growth. Look where it's built, built into a hole. We can't add on to it. The day after everybody moved into the building, we had already outgrown it. Granby, for as long as I can remember, and I've been here for 75 years, is that Granby has always taken a fix the problem that we have today, build for what we need today, not plan for Granby's future. The repairs and maintenance that has been done has been a hack job at times and substandard as far as I'm concerned, but we really need to plan for our future. Let's not do it with a backwards mentality approach. Thank you for the Board of Selectmen for your input on forming this committee. They've done a lot of hard work. My thought process is, is it going to cost me some money? Oh, you bet your life it's going to cost me. But I agree with moving forward and for the planning for the future. And as much as I hate to spend the money, I'm going to support the project.
Right here in the middle aisle here, Mr. Hool, and then behind you? I'll get him.
Dennis Hool, 239 Chicagoe Street. I've attended a couple of their meetings, the West Street Building Committee meetings. Very intense, a ton of questions. These people peppered our representatives. I'm sorry, I got a sore throat. The questions they asked were immense. What they have come up is the best practical purpose for the town of Granby within the means of our town. If you get a chance, watch the videos that are on the screens outside. Go online. Go online, you'll pick them up. That building is a very solid, solid building. If this doesn't pass, we're going to throw away a little over $100,000 on the roof bond that we currently have. Money thrown away. We're going to throw away, I'm going to estimate, and please correct me, a million dollars of engineering fees. Throw it away. What do we get? We get a hole in the ground. If we go back and look at all our projects, everything we've done has been, all right, your needs are this today. Don't give me two inches more. Just give you what you need and that's it. Highway Garage, that was our first big project. Beautiful building, accomplished what we needed then. The Town Hall, Public Safety Building. I understand there's needs over there. That's only what, Chief, eight years? Wow. I'm getting old. Again, so we don't look for expansion. Library, beautiful building. I'm not sure what their needs are. I think we're okay there. But with this project, it gives us future growth. I believe a gentleman stood up at one of the information meetings and questioned, can the school central office move in the unoccupied space in the future? Absolutely. They take up three classrooms right now, and I understand because of special needs that they need more classrooms for individual-type attention.
Mr. Hool, keep it to the article.
Well, it's all part of it. So in the future, we could take and move that office up there. There's not a lot of frills in their proposal. Yes, taxes are going to go up. But you know what? I agree with Mr. Labera. I don't see a new high school in our future, in my future anyways, many years to come. We have solved all our problems except for central offices. This is the chance we get to do it. If you had a chance to go to COA, they're in cramped quarters. If you happen to try to go upstairs to talk to Mr. Martin or anyone up there, cramped quarters, no storage. I believe we're always chasing water issues over there. We wouldn't have that at the West Street School. I really think the best bang for our money is this. People will say, well, let's move some offices over to the old library, Carnegie Building. That's not going to solve our problem. That's just going to put another bigger Band-Aid on a bigger issue. Don't have parking. It's not a good area. Then if you stay where you are, we buy the building, the old, we're up on the hill, the office is on the hill. If we buy that, that is the worst location in town to come out of. Every time you pull out, you better say a prayer because you don't know who's coming around the corner. So by doing all of this, this solves many, many issues. Up on the hill, it's not ADA compliant. It's not up to codes. So right off the bat, we buy it, we're going to soak, I don't know how much money, half a million dollars, a million dollars on it, and we still have nothing that we really need. So I highly recommend, put some thought into it, but this is the best project that we can come forward with for the money that we're, they're asking. Thank you.
And then the gentleman behind you.
Good evening. Chris Pronovos, 226 Amer Street. I just want to say, I've been living in town for over 40 years myself, and it seems that it's just been one series of kicking the can down the road after another. Once Kellogg Hall got shut down, it was supposed to be temporary, as the finance gentleman stated. But that's not how it ended up, and that's why we're here tonight. Our town offices are, I guess for lack of a better description, an embarrassment. I had someone several weeks ago that was going to be building in town, and they needed to come to Town Hall, and they said, now where am I going for this? And you try to explain to somebody, well, part of it's here and part's there. It's just something that we do finally have to rectify, not to repeat what the prior gentleman before me or what George said, but yes, this is painful. No one wants to raise our own taxes. Trust me, I don't. But our seniors deserve better. Take, go over there and take a look at that if you've never been there. I implore you, go take a look at the facilities that they have. And yes, we are a small town, but there are many small towns around. Look at their senior centers. Look at their municipal offices. This is something that we just can't afford to keep kicking the can down the road. And yes, there's been quite a bit of money expended so far. The money for the engineering, everything's been appropriated, spent. And then we're going to be looking for an expenditure for demolition. Or do we plan on just letting that sit there, like so many of the other buildings? Anyone that's lived around here, look around. Buildings that just sit, fall into disrepair. Someone's going to be looking for, what, two and a half, three million, if you can even demolish it for that? This is an opportunity. If we're going to spend two and a half million dollars to demolish that building, well, let's make it into something useful that we can finally put the final piece in our puzzle. We have a new safety complex, which was a long time coming. I was a police officer in town in the late 80s and worked out of the basement of Kellogg Hall, then got kicked over to a dinosaur museum. Unbelievable. Finally, they have a nice place. Same with the DPW, same with our schools, our library, highway department. These are places we're proud of. So let's finish this and let's finally put it to end because the prices are only going to go up. And if you think there's going to be another way to get out of this for less money, I have to respectfully disagree with the Finance Committee. It's not going to happen. We have to come together and do this for the benefit of the town. This has the ability to not only take care of the municipal offices and our senior center, Council on Aging, but opportunities for cultural opportunities, for our children. We have inadequate recreation space that that could perhaps be turned into some recreation in there. There's all kinds of possibilities, but we have to start somewhere. So I implore everyone to think hard on this. Yes, it's painful, painful for me, but something we need to do. And I guess the question I would have, to give it back to you, would be, what is the alternative we're looking at now if we have to leave the phone company building, whatever you want to call it, that's what I still call it? What is the option? What are we looking at?
Thank you.
So we are currently in negotiations with the owner of the town annex to extend our lease for at least 18 months. We don't have a agreement at this time. We are supposed to be out by June 30th of this year, of 2025. And we paid $2,200 for rent a month, and that is going to double if we're not out by June 30th. So we will be paying $4,400. And we don't have a set contract at this time. The Select Board is looking at other options. We just don't have them at this time.
Did you have a question? Right here in the front? Wait, wait, not you, him? Yeah. I'll get to you.
Tom O'Connor, 136 Carver Street. I'm calling the question here. I think that we've heard both sides of the argument, and let's just call the question, have a vote, see where everybody agrees.
I'm not calling the question yet because there's still many people that want to speak, but if you're going to say something that has already been said tonight, or if it's different, if you have something different to say, feel free to still raise your hand, and then you can call the question again in a couple of minutes. Go ahead, sir.
I am Rick Ressing from 35 Green Meadow Lane. And I'm just wondering if the committee looked at how many modular buildings, modular buildings, they could build there on that land and then knock down the school with the two and a half million and take the other two and a half million and go ahead and build the modular nice new buildings, flat, one floor? They'd have access. And I wonder if anybody ever looked at that?
I was going to say that was, yeah, the committee, that wasn't what they were tasked for.
So that wasn't what the committee was tasked with. So it wasn't looked at for modular homes. It was just looked at, what are we going to do with the West Street building?
Way high up on the bleachers?
Hi, Matt Moshazek, 16 Green Meadow Lane. That's Swift of Foot. Thank you for bringing us up here. Do that in high school and you'll be in the hospital. If you want to talk about an embarrassment, that building next door is an embarrassment. Those fields are an embarrassment. That's what everyone sees when they come to the town. Anyway, I've worked for 22 years on projects, both brand-new buildings and renovations to historical existing buildings. And I know there's a 20% buffer zone for this project. I know architects work hard. It's not easy. Not one time have I ever, ever in 22 years come across a project that was a renovation that was anywhere, anywhere near what the allotted budget was or what the projection was. It's always over. So I'm curious, if it's over 20%, what's the contingency plan should that happen?
So working with the committee, we've been approaching a number of items on the scope of work right now to have as alternates built into the project. So right now, the approach will be that the project is going to be built, or rather not built, bid in its entirety with alternates then that we can, based on how the prices come in, back away from scope in order to fall within the budget. Essentially, what we're looking at, and the large piece of that, is related to the abatement and the windows of the unoccupied portion of the building, which is an approximate cost of 1.2 million on its own as a way to be able to have a cushion built into the project. We are also working with the committee to make sure that any of the elements that we are developing as we go through the design and the engineering, all of these are discussed with the committee to look towards the most cost-effective way to get the building done.
Is there any other question? Okay, Mr. I can't see who that is. Sorry. Oh, Greg.
Sorry, Jim. Greg Leonard, 168 Bachelor Street. And I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. One thing that many of you might not be aware of, and the only view that I'm bringing to this, is if we get all of the town offices under one roof, town office will run a lot more efficiently than it is right now. The way it's being run now, as a deficit, it's a mess. Thank you.
How about over here on the short bleachers?
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Rose Mori Rosen, and I live on Kendall Street. And I am only here for a few years in Granby, so I apologize if I sound naive. I came here tonight to vote for this, and I intend to vote for it, and I am shocked to hear the Finance Committee recommend against it. Everywhere I go in Granby, I see building going on, and everyone I meet seems very proud of their town and living here. I don't get the feeling that this is a place that's going to look backwards at all, but rather look forward to the future. So I, to describe it as a static place that should be satisfied with, as you put it, some of you kicking the can down the road, makes no sense to me at all. It does not fit with the image that I have in two years of this town. So I apologize if that sounds naive, but to me, this is a great place to live with a future. My question was, and I think it's been answered, what would happen to the space and how much would it cost if the building, if it's defeated? But I think I got my answer. I really just wanted to say that I think Granby has been mischaracterized as a place that doesn't have or think about the future. Thank you.
Thank you. On the front row, right here. I will get to your questions. I will.
Simon Abbott, 11 Dearbrook Drive. I was wondering, someone mentioned Kellogg Hall. Is there a reason why that's not being considered? I'm not super familiar with the town lore. I can't imagine it would cost 12 and a half million to renovate or acquire that building. Is it owned by the Historical Society or something?
That is not the town's building. Do you mean Carnegie Hall? Kellogg was sold to the Granby Preservation Society, so it's not a town building.
Over here. Yep, go ahead. Yes.
Hi, Nancy Hampshire, Green Meadow Lane. I totally appreciate the citizens' desire to have a place to put all of the municipal buildings together and to have a space for the Council on Aging. I really, I don't have a lot of confidence in this project, the way it's presented here right now and the numbers that you've given. In the first place, I like Rick's idea of having modular buildings, something new. I'm very distressed to hear that some money was put in, but not enough was found to do a comprehensive study to begin with. And once you did come up with the money to do a comprehensive study, you found that it was going to cost three times more and that somewhere in there you found it needed new ventilation and new electricity, new age vac. I mean, from what I could see, you're trying to put lipstick on a pig here. You know, I don't have a lot of underlying confidence. I know you put a lot of work in, but the amount of work, the quantity of work, doesn't always equate to quality of work. And I'm not saying the quality isn't good. I'm saying there are so many things missed here that, and with the cost tripling to 15, 16 million, in this, for only half of a building, I can't imagine in this economic climate right now, we're talking 30, this is going to double before it even gets anywhere. So I'd like to know, I mean, everything about this looks bad to me, and I, that's it, guys. That's all I got.
Thank you. Is there any response to that? Any response to that? No? We have a question back here. Go ahead. Take the mic.
Okay, Joe Fernia, 154 Taylor Street. One comment I would like to make before I ask my question, having been on the Finance Committee for many moons, is that, you know, there's a lot of investment in studies and research when we come up, and yet that often government makes the mistake of presenting, you know, people with only one choice. And we find that psychologically, if we're offered two or three options, generally, things get moved forward. But when we're offered, hey, it's either all this or nothing, and we've spent four or five million dollars, and how many times have we done that for the school systems? You know, that's always a challenge. So I just recommend in the future that when people look at projects, we need to give people options so that they can adjust too, because these are going to be very hard economic times, as we all know. We don't know what's happening to our 401Ks. We don't know if all of us that are on fixed incomes with Social Security, whether they're going to cut the benefits. So we don't know those things, and yet we still need to look on how we try to move forward with the town. Now, in terms of rehab, I'm curious, what is the ADA cost? Now, in terms of rehab, I'm curious, what is the ADA cost? Because my vision of that school where my daughters went to was that it's a multi-level building. So, are we now having to deal with doing extra stuff just because it's not one level floor? So, that's one of my questions.
Okay.
And, and the other thing--
That's my question. Wait, hold on. We'll have that answered.
Okay. The other is climate change. Materials to deal with climate change.
Okay, well, that's outside the scope of this. Go ahead.
So, one of the tasks related to this project is, given the amount of renovation in the building, we would be triggering full compliance with accessibility code. That is why, when you look at the plan, we are prioritizing the left-hand side of the building, which is all on one level, and was also the easiest to rectify the accessibility. In terms of the work required to do that, that is primarily replacing the north-end ramp and reworking the sidewalks at the front entry. Also, it, there are a few double doors throughout the corridors in that building, if you're familiar with it, which need to be widened for clearance. A number of doors as well. Similar issues in terms of clearances, as well as approach, as well as updating the bathrooms in the building. So, related to the building as it is, and this is one of the things that we worked very hard with the committee to do, is to prioritize where we would be able to fit both the COA and the town offices in the building with doing the least amount of work in order to get to full accessibility compliance.
So, do we have a price tag?
I'm getting to that right now. I needed to look up the number, so hang on one moment, please. So, cost for accessibility compliance alone, this is not including any other costs related to other aspects of the building, is approximately 3/4 of a million.
Further questions or discussion? Someone who hasn't talked yet?
Right there in the front. What'd you say? Second row in the front, or third row on the bleachers?
You gotta raise your hand high. Thank you.
Jeremy Lapointe, 70 Chickaby Street. I wrote this down, so I could be more prepared. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the committee for your time and energy. We know that it was a volunteer, and we appreciate your time and energy. That being said, my problem with this proposal is that you were given a $5.7 million budget, and it turned into a $16 million project. I know you have said you were hoping that it would come in under budget, but in the last 25 years of being a builder and a general contractor, I know the odds of coming in under budget is slim to none. In fact, I tell most of my customers, expect 10 to 20% over budget, considering change orders, unforeseen problems, and upgrades. You're asking the town to vote on an override to finance approximately $10 million, which we all know will most likely turn into 12 to 14 million. No one here disagrees with you that all of our town offices should be under one roof. I know I said it before in the last meeting, but I'd like to reiterate, I think we should demo the school for the $2.5 million, and whatever is left from the 5.7 million, build a 5,000-square-foot-or-less-style ranch building. A building with no elevators, no stairs, and no fire suppression. I know there was a question about the fire suppression, but Group A type, A3-type assembly with an occupancy of less than 300 does not require fire suppression, 780 CMR Code 903213. The truth is, we only need 10 new town offices in one location. This shouldn't, this should not be a question of want over need. In regards to the Council on Aging, I feel that it can stay in its current location. I know it's not optimal, but within a 15-minute ride, there's access to four amazing facilities, open to anyone and everyone, Belch Town, South Avenue, Chickaby, and Hoy Oak. We cannot compare our under 8,000-population small town to a 35,000-population city in terms of facility and what we are able to afford to provide for our elderly community. Investing in a new Council on Aging facility brings very little equity to our small town. It would not incentivize young families to come to Granby. I'd like to remind the committee that the reasons we did not renovate West Street School as a school was because it was deemed unsafe for our children due to poor air quality, mold, lead, asbestos, et cetera, and the cost to mitigate was not worth the investment. Last meeting, someone on the committee said they had an air quality test done. It was found to be okay. So, you're saying that since the school has closed and has been maintained less, somehow the air quality has gotten better? Either someone was lying then or is lying now. Do you want to take that chance with our most vulnerable portion of our population?
Thank you. Mr. Randall, the woman next to Mr. Randall, she hasn't spoken yet.
Terry Johnson, 98 Bachelor Street. I'd like to know what the cost is to the town of upkeeping and renting these buildings that were you currently using?
So, I did say that we own the COA. As far as insurance, you guys had talked about that at the informational session, right? It was over 30,000 per building for insurance, per year. And then, the annex, we currently rent for $2,200 per month, which will current, will go up after June 30th to $4,400. If we, well, even if we don't negotiate a contract, that's what it's gonna go up to.
But Micheline said it at the beginning in her presentation.
Yeah. And it was in Micheline Turgeon's presentation at the beginning, how much we spend on each building. I don't know if you have that on the front page, Micheline? You can just restate it?
We're currently spending over $100,000 annually on the two municipal offices.
Elaine?
LaFleur, 235 Chickaby Street. I have a concept of a plan, and I know we've heard that before, but I'm not being, trying to be funny. Why don't we, if this doesn't go through, why don't we sell the school and the property for two, and save the 2.5 million on demo? And maybe think about not always putting out money, but finding ways to bring money in. That's all I really have to say. Storage-wise, I know from personal experience, I'm, I've just newly became a white-haired retiree, and very happy about that. My income has drastically been cut because I had a very good job. I had to archive information, historical information, HIPAA, PHI information, and I hired a company in Hollyoak called New England Archives. They charged me $127 a year for putting materials in a warehouse in Windsor, Connecticut, so I can get to my files. They also scanned, so everything's in the cloud. I own my own cloud. So, that's a good way for us to find ways to store, and the stipulation of having to save items for so many years. Thank you. And Building Committee, your heartfelt thank you, but I'm afraid we're gonna not bring people back into this small, little town, and we're always gonna be 6,000 voters or population.
Thank you. Mr. Randall?
Thank you, George Randall, 52 Taylor. I'm at a point where I've heard enough. People are either gonna support the project, or they're not gonna support it. Accordingly, I'd also like to call the question.
I will now ask the town meeting if they'd like to call a question. Can I have a second? So, calling the question means if you're ready to vote. We need a 2/3 majority of you to say you're ready to vote. So, all those in favor to move the question, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? It was unanimous. So, in order for this motion, under Article 1 to pass, it must pass by a 2/3 majority. I'm actually gonna ask the counters to come out. So, we have a count. There's no more questions, I'm sorry. There's no, no, 'cause we're, we're doing a vote. Can I, can I have the microphone for her, please?
A secret ballot.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion, as we can, to make--
Name, please?
Oh, sorry. Charlotte Mounier, 110 Harris Street. I'd like to make a motion to fix the method of voting to secret ballot.
Can I have a second? So, a motion for a secret ballot means that we will call you up by rows. You will get a ballot. You will fill out yes or no, and you will put the ballot through a machine, just like you, you would vote, be voting at a normal election. So, I will open that up for discussion for the floor. If you want a secret ballot, it has to be passed by a majority. Is there any discussion on that? Charlotte, do you have, do you want us a reason why?
Just to make an accurate, a more accurate vote, yes. Rather than counting.
Thank you. Oh, Mark? Wait, wait, wait for the, um, mic.
Mark Vale, 122 Eastern Street. Personally, don't see a compelling reason to spend the time to do a secret ballot. It's gonna take a long time. I think it's pretty clear. I think people know what they're talking about and what side they're on. I don't think it's worth the time.
So, I'm gonna take a vote on the secret ballot. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You need to raise them higher, so I can see them. Thank you. All those opposed? Secret ballot is, has failed. So, we will now go back to voting on the motion under Article 1. The counters are out. I'm gonna ask you to stand, not raise your cards. So, if you are in favor of the motion under Article 1, please stand and stay standard, stay standing.
What? We read it already.
We read, we already moved. We read the motion. So, it's motion, it's Article 1.
Yes.
It has to pass by a 2/3 majority. That's why I have the counters out. So, if you are in favor of the motion under Article 1, please stand and stay standing. Thank you. Wait, Emily. Wait. Oh, I didn't vote you-- Okay, Ashley, sit down, please. There's been a problem.
And I'm gonna make that out, because that's not--
One of the counters said, "No, what's she's doing?"
Susan, no.
Want me to clarify that?
I know, but we're appropriating tonight.
Okay, there's, there's a little bit, like, too much confusion. So, is there three volunteers that would like to come out to do the count?
We need to have clarification. I'm so sorry.
Sure. Correct.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have that clarification done.
Okay.
I will have that clarification done. So--
What we're doing--
Charlotte, you want--
It is not effective until it goes to the ballot.
What?
So, can we have some order, first of all? When we count for a motion, we either, I sometimes have you raise your cards, but there's a lot of you tonight, and a lot of times, when you raise your cards, you can't be seen. So, standing is an easier way for the counters. So, that is why we are, I'm having you stand, number one. Number two, I am gonna-- Number two, I am going to clarify, one of our select board members will clarify what you're actually voting on tonight, because I hear that there is some confusion as to what you're voting on. And then number three, we need three volunteers to count. So, we have one. Come on. You, yeah. And a third one? Up, up, up on the bleachers? Come on down.
This is going to chaos.
Your volunteer, your volunteer, okay? What happened in the session?
I'm not standing here.
And then, that is changing the rule of voting?
It is, yeah.
No, you don't.
Yeah, take, take him.
Get control.
Can I please have control? We are trying to solve a problem right now, all right? So you have to give us some, patient, be patient with us, please, and we will get to the count.
So what they're suggesting is, they're suggesting this, just people who stand up and they hand their cards, and then they count.
So it's a type of secret ballot?
Well, they're still standing. They're standing, so it's not secret.
Yes, you still get the card.
The volunteers, right?
Okay, so if we're going to, just, is everybody else bored with that?
So what we are going to do, after it's explained again by your select board on what you're voting on, we will have the counter, I will have you stand if you're in favor. The counters will come to you and collect your cards. And then we will count your cards. Then you will sit, and I will ask for the people who oppose. You will stand, and we will collect your cards and count those.
It's only needed if the first one doesn't-
All right, all right, thank you, please. So we're going to first explain what you're voting on.
Yes. So as we started off with the motion, so the motion is to appropriate the money for the renovation to the West Street building. If it's voted on here as yes, then that money is appropriated for the building. However, then it goes to the ballot box for an actual vote. So if it goes to the ballot box and fails there, then the article fails. If it's approved at the ballot box, then the money's already been appropriated to move forward.
Did you have a question?
No, 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 no. No more questions.
So, like Mr. Saxon said, if it passes tonight, the money's going to be appropriated, but it's pending the ballot. If it fails, then there's no money, the project doesn't get done. If it fails tonight, it's still going to go to the ballot for you to vote on, and then it can go- Yes, it can. And then, after that, it goes to the annual town meeting-
Please, order.
For a final decision. What?
They're asking if the initial vote fails, are you going to call a second vote within 45 days?
That's if it fails at the ballot box?
Yes, that's a decision of the board to decide.
So, okay, so Mr. Martin did explain to us that if it does fail at the ballot box, that the select board has the ability to bring it back up 45 days later, where we can, or within that 45-day window, where we can have another special town meeting and decide whether or not we are going to bring it forward. But the select board has not talked about that, it was just something that Mr. Martin had said is an option.
The ballot box, remember what vote is here today, and then we vote, we vote on the ballot, and if it fails in the ballot, then you guys still have the option to have another election, special election, yeah, 45 days.
Yes.
Yes.
You can say that for everybody, we're looking here.
Okay.
Stop asking questions.
Okay, so what Kim was saying is that if it passes, I'm sorry, did you say pass or fail tonight? Okay, so whether it passes or fails tonight, it's going to go to the ballot box on May 19th, for the whole town and the voters to decide whether or not this is something that they are interested in. However, there is no money appropriated for the project, so we would have to go back to a town meeting, whether it's an annual or a special town meeting, and ask for appropriations. If it fails then, then it's done. So, you are approving whether or not we are appropriating money tonight. It's going to be at the ballot box on May 19th, for you to say yes or no, either way. There just might not be funds there if it is a yes at the ballot box. We still have to bring it back for you, to you, to decide whether or not that's something you want to do.
All right, do I have my counters ready? I, I, wait, I, so- If you are not, if, please sit, everybody sit unless you're a counter. And the officer can stand.
Somebody count the people on the floor?
Well, they're going to take the cards, so.
Okay.
They're going to stand and take the cards.
All right, everybody is sitting now. If you are in favor of the motion under Article One, to appropriate the money, please stand. Please stay standing until your card has been taken by one of the counters.
Yep. There's no appropriation. Yeah. Fifty, fifty-one percent of voters say yes, I want it.
To do what?
It's never usually that way, usually.
It's part of the master rollup.
So, but we've tried, basically. No, we looked at it as, you know, normally people are going to show up, so let's have the whole town vote on it, versus a small majority of town.
Well, we, to be fair, we found that out tonight.
Yeah.
Before we came here.
Wait, what?
No.
It does make a difference here. It still makes a difference here. Because if it doesn't, doesn't vote. They don't have money. Then it's not going to go to the election.
That's where she's going, she's not going to. Nine times out of ten, usually you go to the ballot, get your approval, and then you that's the way around. We did it, yeah. For the fund. Yeah, same. Then you get approval for funding. To adjust the same. Forty-five days. Because, because you have a 10-day window for someone to protest. And then you have 35-day notice to warn them. Right. But all I'm saying is-
That's, that's practical.
Yes, because the board's like, I'm trying to say, no.
All those opposed to appropriating the money under the motion, please stand.
Yes, you could do that, I could. Oh, see, now you're, now you're swaying the vote, you're dropping the cards.
Do we, Lynn, do we need the cards? Do we need the cards for this?
Four thousand votes, that's why we went to the ballot box. Exactly. I have no problem. We only have this place to nine o'clock.
No, the lights show up.
Is it at nine o'clock, it really does it?
That's true.
All right, what'd you get? So the motion fails. Ninety-four, 161 against. So the moderator will now call on Mr. Saxon to present the motion under Article Two.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer $1,100,000 for the municipal building stabilization fund, transfer $900,000 from the capital needs stabilization fund, and transfer $500,000 from account number 011925821, which is the article of the special town meeting on December 11th, 2023, number one. West Street building renovation for a total of $2,500,000 for the purpose of funding the remediation of hazardous materials, demolition debris removal, and leveling the site of the West Street building.
Second. So, now I'll have discussion?
So I have, I actually have a question, Lynn, because we didn't actually anticipate it getting to this point, but it was estimated $2,500,000 to get rid of West Street building, to raise it and tear it down. So why are we appropriating more than that? That's what, at the informational meeting, that's what we were told, is we need 2.5 million to raise the building.
At the informational meeting, we did state that number, where we also were advised, because when you demolish and get rid of everything, we still need an OPM, and we still need other things that we have to accomplish to get it done. That's why the number is higher.
And we have 5.7 million from the special town meeting that we appropriated on December 11th of 2023, or what's left. So why are we taking from stabilization and the other funds?
That's a question for you guys, the select board, you decide that, not us, so.
Well, that would be the town accountant, I guess, then.
You can amend the motion.
So that it would only go from that article, then? All right, I'm going to amend the motion and make sure that it only comes out of the 5.7 account that we appropriated already, so nothing's going to get taken out of the other funds.
So I need that amendment in writing. And while she's running that, can I have a motion to stop debate on the main article? I have a second. Somebody proposed an amendment, so we have to entertain the amendment first before I take on further questions on the main motion. So until the amendment is drafted and I can read it to the audience, I can't accept questions yet, because I don't know what the amendment is going to say. Does anybody want a recess for a couple minutes to go to the bathroom, or are you set? No, okay, no. No.
Then you.
Do that. Just tell me what, yes.
That's right. I actually have a question, and that is going to be for special counsel, because usually we do for a lesser or greater amount. Should I be adding that in there?
Not for the motion.
Okay.
And I didn't actually understand the first question. We said approximately two-point-uh information.
So I'm wondering, should I do the two-point-six? So there's a contingency.
It's going to cost about three million, from what I understand from the OPM, because that's just construction. You need sap costs in there.
So can we get the OPM to give us a quote or no? Because I'm putting two.
There's, you can't do quotes.
Okay.
So, I mean, you can't.
So I just took that out and put that.
Yeah.
Do you need me to write my name on it?
What?
Do you need me to write my name on it?
All right, can I have order, please? I have an amendment in front of me that's been offered. It's been seconded. This is what the amendment says. The town vote to transfer from account, the count zero-one-one-nine-two-five-eight-two-one, A R T, special town meeting twelve-eleven-twenty-three, number one, West Street Building renovation, for a total of three million dollars for the purpose of funding the remediation of hazardous materials, demolition, debris removal, and leveling the site of the West Street Building. I will now open up the floor for questions on this amendment. Are there any questions? Mr. Hool. Are these ARPA funds?
So back on December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, we did allocate to be part of the five-point-seven million, one-point-nine million dollars of ARPA funds. And hold on, I'm going to get you the exact amount, because I wrote that down. It was one-point-nine, but I have. One second. Here it is. So according to the warrant from December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, ARPA funds are, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, one million, eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Any further questions right here on the bleachers?
I'd like to know why this has to be.
Name, please.
Oh, sorry. Robert Hall, Levon Phillips Circle. I'd like to know why this has to be voted on tonight. It's not going to be demolished before it's approved or not approved, right? Am I right or wrong?
Correct. We can't do anything until after the May nineteenth ballot.
Why don't we wait until after that? Why does it have to be demolished? Why can't they sell it as it is? And save two, three million dollars?
Mr. Libera will answer that for you.
John Libera, speaking for the Finance Committee. Thank you for that question, because I'm going to make a comment basically along the same kind of lines, but with maybe a little different conclusion. There are complications whenever we allocate money to a project. As you may have noticed, that the original six million dollars that we allocated to the project came from a number of sources, some of which were taking funds from previous projects that had not been finished, or previous projects which had not ever been started, and transferring the funds from that project into this new project. Well, the same thing can happen here. What we're being asked to vote on is to put two-and-a-half million dollars into a spot that has an allocation. It's allocated for tearing down the building. The fact that we've allocated that money to that spot does not mean that the select board has to actually carry out the action. We can put two-and-a-half million dollars into a project that says this is for tearing down West Street School. The select board, if they so desire, could say, well, we don't want to tear the school down yet. What we want to do is we want to go back and establish, give this the same committee or establish a new committee, and ask them of the fundamental question of what do we do about town offices? Should they be in one place? Should they be spread out? Tell us solutions for town office. And in order to fund that, they could then take the money that had been put into this project and said, well, we're not interested in this project anymore, so this two-and-a-half million dollars is available for use in the other project. So it doesn't really make any difference whether or not you vote for this or not. If you, we don't vote for it tonight, you could bring it back in a future meeting and put it in. But if you vote for it and put it in there, that gives the future meeting the possibility of taking it and reallocating it to study the problem that might include a different version of the West Street School renovation. I hope that helps explain some of it. Not really. It says that, and what I'm saying is that the fact that you're putting this money away here doesn't mean that it's going to be used to tear down the school. Okay. And if you want to use it for something else and keep the school going, which would only make sense if a school was going to be renovated in a different way for a different purpose, then money would be available to do that. You could just transfer it out of the new project.
We can't hear you without the microphone.
It was also approved for three million that you just said, not two-and-a-half.
That's the amendment. It hasn't been approved.
Whatever, whatever the figure is.
You said the amendment was for three million, not two-and-a-half.
Yeah. Whatever it is, all it does is it protects that money so it can be used either for the purpose that we're saying now, tear the school down, or to be used as a protected pot of money which could be transferred into another project if, for example, they want to revisit a renovation portion of the school.
Well, you didn't answer the part where could you sell the school as it is?
Yeah, that's not for me.
Thank you. It is an option, but that's not something that we looked into for this project.
Excuse me, right here. This woman who's raising her hand, on the floor, please.
Mary Ann Munger from Smith Avenue. This question is for Mr. Libera. Why couldn't it just be transferred from the old, where it is sitting right now, the five-point-seven million for the, for this project? Why couldn't we just leave it there and transfer it somewhere else later?
So your question is, why can't you keep the five-point-seven million where it is and transfer it later? So.
Do you want me to answer that one?
So the amendment asks for it to be transferred out of. The amendment is asking to transfer that money.
Which we don't have to, right?
You vote it down, it stays where it is. If you vote this amendment down, then the money stays where it is. It stays in the account that's currently in.
But it was allocated for renovation. This is for demolition. So I think that's what they have to understand.
Basically, the question is, could we just postpone this question until later on? And the answer is yes, except that that takes away an important option from the select board. If this passes, then the option that the select board has, that we'd not have otherwise, is to decide that they just want to raise the school and go on and look for something different to do. And that will be taken away from them if this fails. If this passes, then they have two, they have a number of options. They have an option to tear the school down. They have an option to put together a different kind of study. They have an option to think about selling it, and all those things will be available to them, and we'd be taking that away from them if we vote this down.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Leonard Yek here, thirty-two Ferry Hill Road. The question I have, I think you told us before in the introduction, what is the cost of maintaining this property and without raising it, tearing it down, or doing nothing with it?
So right now, we're asking about the amendment, entertaining questions on the amendment as to whether or not you want to add, if you want to take three million out of the West Street Building.
Renovation.
For later.
Project. So your question is for, after we talk about the amendment. Mr. Nally.
Steven Nally, thirty-one Pleasant Street. Madam Moderator, what this amounts to is changing buckets. I think that the amendment should be declined and the original article be tabled. Thank you.
Thank you. On the bleachers.
Anthony Serini, Three Cedar Drive. Does this amount of money, the three million, does that include the hundred million or so that we have to pay off the bond? Or does it have to be stipulated in this amendment that the bond is also paid off for the roof? And the other part of the question is, if we don't pass this article and we kind of leave this project in limbo, if we don't have a commitment for the ARPA funds, what's the possibility of the federal government taking that ARPA fund back, since there's no project anymore?
So. Right now, we're discussing where we're taking the money from. Your second question on ARPA will be discussed after the amendment has been voted for or against. You could bring that question back up.
I don't remember this first question. The bond for the roof.
It's still going to be paid for.
So the bond still has to be paid for, for the roof. So we still have to pay that. That wasn't in the total that we just appropriated. That was to raise the building.
Mr. Dumraki.
Thank you. Rich Dumraki, Batzner Street. I just want to say to John Libera, you got to stop playing games, because that's exactly what's happening here.
So you can't point?
I'm talking about the three million specifically. Okay? I think it's a good idea to transfer the money into the account, but what has happened in the past, the town administrator has money sitting in all these accounts, some go back years. If the money is not to be used for a specific purpose, it should be put back, the appropriation should be reversed out, and the appropriation should be put back in cash. But that's not what's happening. Like, for the original five million dollars on this project, the town used one-point-eight million dollars that was already appropriated for the school gym. They just transferred it. But we have to stop these transfers, because the select board, through the town administrator, is the only one who makes these transfers. They should be approved by the people who are here. Any amount spent should not be transferred from one account to another. It could go, this amendment could go into a special account, but if it's determined that by election that we're not going to raise the building, it should be taken out of that account and should be reversed out. It shouldn't be transferred for another purpose. Thank you.
So I have been asked to move the question on the amendment. Do I have a second? So we are now going to vote on the amendment, and only the amendment. In order for the amendment to pass, it needs to pass by a majority. Do I need to refresh a memory as to what the amendment says? All right. All those in favor of the amendment, please stand. Thank you, please sit. All those opposed? So the amendment passes by a majority. We weren't counting. We weren't counting. It's a majority, so we don't need a count? Would you like a count? So we are now moving back to the motion as amended. Is there any discussion or further discussion on the motion as amended? All right? So all those in favor of the motion under Article Two as amended, please. The motion says the town vote to transfer from account zero-one-one-nine-two-five-eight-two-one, A R T, special town meeting, twelve-eleven-thirteen. Number one, West Street Building renovation. For a total of three million dollars. For the purpose of funding the remediation of hazardous materials, demolition, debris, removal, and leveling the site of West Street Building. That is the motion as amended. In order for the motion as amended to be passed, it must be passed by a majority. So I need people to all sit. So then if you're for this motion, you can stand. So if you're standing, I'm going to call right now. All those in favor of the motion as amended, please stand. Thank you. All those opposed? Please stand.
This is going to require counters, I think.
Thank you. The motion passes by a majority. The moderator now calls for a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. Second? All in favor? Thank you.